Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for January 20th, 2020 to order. Roll call please.
Joe Zitzelberger?
Here.
Kristen Rungy?
Here.
Bill Ranum?
Here.
Chris Dahmer?
Here.
Phil Willems?
Here.
Eric Moran?
Here.
Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Okay, first thing we have on the agenda for this evening, confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in Wanakee's view on January 16th. The final agenda was posted on January 16th at all three village posting locations, and the final agenda and meeting packet was made available online on January 16th.
Thank you. All right, next we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I'd like number four pulled, please.
Okay, Joe asked for number four to be pulled. Okay, do we have a motion for one through three?
So moved.
Motion by Phil Willems?
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Eyes have it. Joe, number four, approved proposal for scoreboards at Meadowbrook Park.
Had a little bit of a discussion earlier, and my only thought was, you know, we're looking at a proposal from Pepsi here. Evidently, there was a question when this was done five years ago, thrown out to Coke as well, to see whether there was presumably a better deal, or whatever. I guess I'm not so much against this particular one, as it'd be nice to see a little more due diligence with it. I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
Well, I would say that it... Well, Phil, you're the Parks Chair, do you wanna comment?
Pepsi is a big, good partner in the past, has been at a lot of events, a lot of scoreboards around town, is our primary vendor, and most of our staff here, so we're supporting them, they're supporting us.
That's fair.
I will share that the comment that I made at Parks Committee was that we might wanna open this up to all of our businesses in the community, if they wanted to have the opportunity to sponsor for themselves, that in the future, we'd look at giving them that opportunity as well. So.
With all of that, I will move to approve the proposal for the scoreboards at Meadowbrook Park.
Okay, motion by Joe Zitzelberger.
And I will second.
Second by Phil Willems. Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who'd like to address the board for an item that's not on the agenda for this evening?
We have one from Nyla Frye at 404 East Room.
Okay, Wanakee area EMS and bond and I would like to thank the individuals, businesses, and community organizations that contributed to the EMS monument. We appreciate the support the Village of Wanakee offered of up to $15,000. At the same time, we are happy to announce the funds were not needed for the monument, since the cost of monument was covered by other contributions. The fund remains open, since we are working on plans to add a memorial bench to the site to honor those EMS members who have fallen while active on the EMS, as well as covering maintenance needs of the memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Todd, anything this week?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay. Then moving on, first items we have are presentations, the first being discuss and take action on recognition of service for Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Bill Ranum. Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it.
We have a proclamation honoring Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson. Whereas the Village of Wanakee values its employees and entrusts them with providing service to its residents, and whereas Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson has a longstanding employee... has been a longstanding employee of the Village of Wanakee, serving as police sergeant since 2005, and prior to that, serving as police officer starting in 2002, and whereas the residents of the Village of Wanakee have long enjoyed the benefits of a great police department. And whereas Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson, for the past 17 years, worked alongside staff at all levels and departments to ensure Wanakee is a safe place for every resident and visitor. And whereas Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson has been instrumental in helping the Wanakee Police Department protect and serve all people with respect, fairness, and compassion. And whereas Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson has been dedicated to making the Village of Wanakee a better place, better community, by contributing to the department's senior services and special Olympics programs, as well as being an active participant of the police unity bike tour, raising money for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial and Museum and families of fallen officers. And whereas Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson served as the lead firearms instructor for the police department, ensuring all personnel are equipped with the right skills to effectively protect the village. And whereas the village board and the residents of the Village of Wanakee benefited greatly from Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson's devotion, his dedication, and hard work. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the village board of the Village of Wanakee extends its sincere and heartfelt appreciation to Sergeant Jeffrey Hutchinson for his untiring devotion to the Village of Wanakee, village staff, and Wanakee residents. Let this resolution be entered in and made part of the permanent records of the Village of Wanakee, and I will be presenting a suitable copy to Jeffrey Hutchinson. Passed and adopted this 20th day of January 2020.
Thank you. All right. So next we have discuss and take action on recognition of service for Lieutenant Joe Peterson. Do we have a motion?
I move we commit the public record to Lieutenant Joe Peterson's proclamation.
Motion by Phil Willems?
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger. Call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye too. I'm taking a drink quick. Come on up.
Okay, we have a proclamation honoring Lieutenant Joe Peterson. Whereas the Village of Wanakee values its employees and entrusts them with providing service to its residents, and whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson began his career in law enforcement in 1995, serving as a probation and parole agent for the state of Wisconsin, and whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson has been a longstanding employee of the Village of Wanakee, serving as police lieutenant since 2001, and prior to that, serving as police sergeant, school resource officer, and police officer starting in 1997. And whereas the residents of the Village of Wanakee have long enjoyed the benefits of a great police department. And whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson, for the past 22 years, worked alongside staff at all levels and departments to ensure Wanakee is a safe place for every resident and visitor. And whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson has been instrumental in helping the Wanakee Police Department protect and serve all people with respect, fairness, and compassion. And whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson has been dedicated to making the village a better community by contributing as the police department liaison to safe communities of Dane County and safe harbor, as well as serving as the departmental lead for the Wanakee White Collar Crime Symposiums. And whereas Lieutenant Joe Peterson coordinated the police department's annual national night out event, which focuses on bringing the community and the department together in a positive and uplifting setting. And whereas the village board and the residents of the Village of Wanakee benefited greatly from Lieutenant Joe Peterson's devotion, his dedication, and hard work. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the village board of the Village of Wanakee extends its sincere and heartfelt appreciation to Lieutenant Joe Peterson for his untiring devotion to the Village of Wanakee, village staff, and Wanakee residents. Let this resolution be entered in and made part of the permanent records of the Village of Wanakee, and I'll be presenting a suitable copy to Joe Peterson. Passed and adopted this 20th day of January 2021.
Real quick, I just wanna say thank you very much to the village board for your past and continued support of the police department, and thanks to all of our village staff that we work with on a daily basis, so this means a lot. The years have gone very quickly, and I've enjoyed working with all of you over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always hard when you go into the nitty-gritty now, and the police protection leaves. What can I say? All right. Next we have license and permits. Discuss and take action on operator license applications for Louis Harvey and Kendra Schwartz.
Caitlin? Staff recommends approval of the operator licenses included in your packet, subject to completion of a responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wanakee Police Department.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Dr. Ranum for approval?
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, under new business, first item is discuss and take action on the Heritage Hills Development, Veridian Development, at the corner of State Highway 113 and North Division Street, AKA the Brining property, annexation ordinance, annexation agreement, general development plan, and preliminary plat. Okay? We don't need to read it right now, right?
No.
Unless we choose to go into...
Correct. So, I can just give a brief overview, if you'd like, of where we're at. So, I'm on page 60 of your packet, and so we have a number of items that are related to this proposed development. One would be an annexation ordinance, one would be, and then annexation agreements, a general development plan, which is zoning, and then a preliminary plat, which is a land division. We've had public hearings at the Plan Commission on the zoning and on the plat. We had a public hearing at the last village board meeting on the zoning and on the plat. And just, the annexation ordinance itself is, I would say, you know, it's statutory that we have to adopt it, it's administrative in nature, you know, if the village board is inclined to move ahead with the annexation, that's one of the steps, is adopting the ordinance. That is on page 61 and 62 of your packet. Just kinda, we have some cleanup things. Joe noticed that there's a typo in section six on page 62, we need to change 2017 to 2020. Just a little more, you know, there is language in here that talks about zoning, so we have an ordinance that says when we bring land in to the village, we initially put it in an egg-holding district. We also have additional zoning that we've had public hearings on, which would be kind of the final zoning, which is a GDP. So there is, the step is, it comes in as an, as egg under the annexation, but then immediately, in this case, if you approved it, would transform to GDP for zoning. The preliminary plat is, I think there's been progress that's been made on it. If you look at the Plan Commission packet for December, there were comments that were made by strand engineering, many of them technical in nature as they relate to the plat. My understanding is progress is being made on those. And, you know, if you go back to page 60 of your packet, the motion, if you were to make it tonight, would take into consideration the fact that it's a conditional motion, and certain other work needs to be done. Similar with the general development plan, we've had a public hearing on the GDP. We've shared our comments with the developer. My understanding is, all comments made by village staff are acceptable, so the document that's in your packet is not in the final form yet, but again, your motion would allow for updates to be made based on village staff comments. The last issue, or the last action item, would be the annexation agreement. That's the one that has not been before you yet. We've been through December and in January, making progress and negotiating, and having meetings with the developer. The annexation agreement was not prepared to come to you January 6th, this is the first meeting that we had it ready, and so that's why it's on the agenda. That's kind of an overview of the project at a staff level. We do believe that at some point in time tonight, we would recommend going into closed session, so that we can discuss with the board terms and conditions related to the annexation agreement. Just for the public, we would not be discussing the zoning at all, we would not be discussing the plat. It would only be issues for terms and conditions in the annexation agreement.
Okay, Kevin, any comments from you?
I think I can follow up after the developer, I think the developer wanted to make a couple statements, and then I think you were interested in taking some public comment after, prior to those public comment, I can probably outline a couple of things that I want you to think about, and the public may want to comment on. I know there's been some active discussion with a couple citizens.
Okay.
So we'll go, other citizens, I'd be curious to hear, to hear a citizen comment, maybe we can address it in front of everybody, if there is concern or comment or concern.
So why don't we handle it this way? You can do your presentation right now. And if we hear some questions that aren't addressed within yours, then you'll have that opportunity that you can respond.
Okay, fair enough.
Sound good?
Thank you.
So, we're up here tonight, again, Chris Sellers, Veridian Homes, with me, Dan Day, my engineer from D'Nafrio Associates, and Brian Munson, planner from Vanda Wall Associates. And we just wanna talk through the pre-annexation agreement, comments that came out less than two weeks ago, so since the last time we were here, which was two weeks ago. And for the most part, we've worked through, with staff, had good meetings, and came to an agreement, but there are some things that kinda caused us by surprise, and that's what we wanted to talk through tonight, but also provide you with clarification on the history of how we got to this point. Again, there has been a lot of, somehow, some way, there's been quite a few rumors blowing up on social media over the weekend, that I've been monitoring and disappointed to hear, because there's not much truth to it, so that's again, why I'm very cognizant of what the public is here for tonight, and would just like to directly answer any of those comments or concerns here tonight for everybody. So, first item, the Farm Mixed Use Center, Brian, do you wanna touch on that real quick?
Yeah, I can talk to a couple of things on the zoning components of it. We've been working closely with staff, we've received their letters of review, and we've submitted actually this afternoon, a completely revised document reflecting 99% of those comments. A couple little points of clarification that we'd be seeking tonight. In terms of the Farm Center mixed use components, there's a request for some language about the existing buildings, and we've added in language that identifies that we are seeking to try to reuse those buildings if possible. If it's not possible, we're gonna use those as the basis of architectural character. So we'd be, any new buildings would be designed with that similar vein, whether that's adding to the existing buildings that could stay, or whether we're replacing buildings, we've added that into the sections for the Farm Center mixed use. The second component of the zoning that we were commenting on is the request for a east-west bike path all the way along Main Street. What we've proposed within the plan is an east-west corridor that would come along Main Street roughly to the center point of the project, go along our main entrance here, and then along the back of these, all the way to Schumacher. The reason that we picked that corridor was twofold. We do have existing wetlands right here along Main Street, which starts to get really close between where you could put that bike path, and where there any potential expansion of lanes could be in conflict. The other is a significant, as everyone I'm sure is aware, of quite a bit of grade up here. By taking this path along the back of the houses here, that gets us out to Schumacher at a point where we have good visibility, but avoids a lot of that grade. If people's destination is Schumacher County Park or headed north, this pathway has less grade to traverse as you go through the project than having to come up the hill and then back down the hill. We will have a path that goes down the intersection at Schumacher, on the west side of Schumacher, which would allow that connectivity down to the industrial park, but we do request that the east-west corridor be satisfied by creating an off-street system, albeit just slightly removed from Main Street. The final piece has to do with the design of the three intersections, and we've been working diligently with the DOT and village staff, and will continue to do that. We do recognize there'll be improvements necessary for this project, that will be part of the construction of this project. But what we don't have at this point is finished designs, because the DOT really controls a lot of that discussion, and it's gonna take some time to get there. But we are working with them, we continue to work with village staff, and by the time we get into our final plat and first phases, we will have answers on a majority of those facilities, and they may continue to evolve, in that if we don't get down to Schumacher for several years, the DOT may come out with different standards. So, that is something that we've incorporated language that reflects that ongoing conversation, but we don't have plans at this point. So, we'll just continue to move forward as the best we can, and work together with the village and the DOT on that. Other than that, a lot of the housekeeping items that were raised have been incorporated, and the content has been updated to reflect all of that and delivered back to village staff, so that we can continue to move forward on the zoning components of it.
Thank you, and I just wanna add too, we did present a Schumacher Farms Park a couple weeks ago, had a great presentation, a great meeting, and agreed to keep everybody in the loop, and we do get closer to Schumacher Road, and then possibly working with them on how to create some kind of pedestrian crossing, and what that might look like, just to encourage safe crossing over Schumacher. The next item was just a multifamily site. We've, in great detail, laid that out as far as the meeting the 75-25 ordinance, but what we've asked for is, we've agreed to work with the subcommittee of the housing group that will be working on these items related to the housing study, and figure out what is maybe the right percentage of how this policy or ordinance should be worded in the future. What we would like, though, is just kind of a timeframe or a time limit of one year on that, so that a year from now, if there's no resolution out there, and we come back with something that is, meets that 75-25 mix, that we could proceed forward with an SIP approval for that. Also, as asked, again, it's out in the public and online, there's rumors going on that we will come back and look for TIF money for the multifamily site. We will not come back and look for TIF money, we will put in the public infrastructure, so there's nothing to TIF for this. So, let's squash that rumor while it's out there, and we can be at the podium to do that. So, the last two items now are just Schumacher and Division Street. I'll let Dan talk about Schumacher real quick.
Yeah, good evening. We've been looking at Schumacher Road, and just as to what the ultimate look of that roadway's going to be, and we've had some discussion with staff exactly what that's going to be. In general concept, there'll be our trail system, as is indicated on our plan, on the west side of Schumacher, that'll run full length, north to south, all the way from Main Street to the north end of the property. Working in from there, on our half, or the eastern, or the western half of the roadway, as our property goes out to the center line, there'll be a full four-foot bike lane, plus a full 12-foot travel lane, in that sense, on the west side. How we handle the drainage, I think, is an open question yet, that we can figure out as we get closer to constructing that, because you know, this roadway is in good shape today, probably be five or 10 years before we get to that section of the neighborhood, where final design decisions need to be made over on that side. I think the question out there that will probably be presented by staff is the other side of Schumacher, and whether that needs to be improved, whether that needs to be 12-foot and four-foot bike lanes, and I think that's a question that is out there, and then who's responsible for that other half. Since our property goes to the center line, we kinda feel we're responsible to the center line for our costs, but if the village wants improvements on the other half, I think that's a decision that needs to be, needs to be made here. So I think that's really... Oh yeah, and the TIA, you know, we kinda look at each of these different things as a fairness quotient. The TIA that we're working on right now, that's getting prepared to be submitted formally to the DOT, will have some improvements at each of the intersections. Those improvements will improve those intersections, so the level of service that's there today will be equal or better, or slightly better than what is there in the future, will be better or slightly better. So we don't feel that there's any ask from the developer for any cost to help with those improvements, since it's basically gonna be a one-for-one, whatever we put in will meet the future needs of what, you know, we're adding to those intersections. So that's something that we're not going to be asking for in the present setup as today, is any funds to help implement any of the TIA that we've, that we're proposing.
Thank you. Just to add one more thing on the Schumacher, it'll be a number of years before we get to Schumacher and to that side of the development. When we do get there, again, we fully plan on improving our half of Schumacher, and if you would like to try and outline a timeline for that, we'd be willing to work with you on that. But also, as we get there, it'll become a little bit more clear what potentially could happen on the west side. We have a good relationship with the landowners, are on the east side of Schumacher, and potentially there could be conversations on, that would dictate improving both sides at that time. For now, Schumacher's in pretty good shape, and there really isn't anything necessary, you know, in the near future there. So the last item, and then, is Division Street, and the way we see it is basically, there's three options here for Division Street, and the first option is, don't build Division Street, the village or Veridian. Our initial plan came in and didn't show Division Street being connected. We then were asked to show dedication for half the street of Division Street, which we put on our plat, and we've shown on the map. But every time I presented to you, and it's probably been, and Plan Commission, probably been five or six times, no one's ever asked for it to go through, but the biggest concern has always been the sledding hill. And so if we really wanna save the sledding hill, we just don't build the road. Now that's one option, I'm saying, not saying that's the best option, but I just at least wanna give you that option to think about. Second option is, what we were a little surprised by, and that was that the pre-annexation agreement said that Veridian is responsible for building all of Division Street and maintaining the sledding hill in its entirety. That's kind of a big ask, given the unknowns that are there right now, and everybody weighing in on this. We need to further engineer and further design this area, and also discover what is under the village's land up there. The village, village's land used to be a dump site, and we're not sure what soils are, contain possibly a buried airplane or something else up there. So, there's a lot of discovery that needs to happen, and it's a big floating, you know, potentially could be a big floating number. So, the numbers that I've quoted, and I've been up here over and over again, and Roberts drilled me, and other people drilled me, is, you know, are you sure you're gonna hit these price points and everything else? And yes, we are confident we can hit these price points on these houses, at these attainable price points, but that was taken into assumption approximately half the cost of Division Street and half the cost of Schumacher. That's what we assumed was our responsibility, given the history here. And up until this point, the village has paid for Division Street, they even paid to acquire some of the land for Division Street. Some of it was given to them, but some of it was acquired, and they paid for it. We are willing to give you the land, and also work with the village, and this is option three, which I think is the best scenario, is to work together and go through the proper planning, that we're all on the same page, that the sledding hill not just isn't just kept intact, but potentially could be better with the accent pieces of our park in place, and parking, and warming house, and everything else. But also, there might be a chance that, or necessity, that the village might need Veridian to dedicate even a little bit more land, because the road has to bend on our property to save a portion of that sledding hill. And so, again, that's where we've always assumed that we'd have a good working relationship, we'll go through the proper channels, Veridian will take the lead in design this, and even work on getting, making sure that both sides can work together to get the best costs associated with building this. This is at least probably two to four years out, and so by that time, we'll have 70 to 100 houses already built out here that are collecting tax dollars, that are being assessed. So, if there's pressure on who's gonna pay for this, and is the village gonna pay for this, you're gonna be collecting tax revenue for a few years already from the houses that'll be out here, that that'll help contribute to the cost of this road. And if we're smart about this, and we work together, I think we can be, do it for a very fair price, and also maintain and improve that sledding hill. So, that's what I just wanted to share tonight, was never, again, there's all kinds of rumors and misconceptions going out there, but this is, this is how we've gotten to this point, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can make a good decision and work together after your closed session tonight.
Thank you.
Just a couple things before, I want the board to keep in mind, that we really need some direction from the board, like it's been stated, the way we wrote the agreement at the staff level is that our expectation from the village is that Veridian be responsible for 100% of the cost of the Division Street extension, and 100% of the cost for the improvements to both sides of Schumacher Road. Certainly there's arguments, and I think you heard some arguments today, and on why they feel that the village should be cost-sharing in those improvements. Certainly we didn't, we think that's a village board policy decision, and certainly think there's a reasonable argument for requiring the developer to pay 100% of those improvements. The other, I think a couple of good things that we have resolved is... The other, I think a couple of good things that we have resolved is the improvements related to the TIA. So, all the improvements to Main Street that are going to be required as part of the DOT, TIA improvements is going to be at the developer's cost. And so, I think there's agreement on that, and I think we have a way of moving forward. As well as the sewer and water, and we don't have the exact language down, but we'll work on that as a condition of approval. But there's some, there's some off-site sewer and water improvements that are going to be necessary because of this development, and I think they understand that we'll require them to pay their proportionate share of those off-site improvements that may be necessary for not only this development but for expansion within the business park. And the last thing I want to talk about is the phasing. I'd sent around a proposed phasing plan for the next 20 years with some commitments that we've already made. We have a number of commitments that are already made in terms of Kill Kenny Farms, Westbridge, Golden Ponds, Arboretum Village, even though it's not started yet, and Kill Kenny West. Our past practice has been to allow for 30 lots a year per development, so that we allowed them to group them in years of two, so 60 lots every two years. And we've always, our goal's always been is to keep our number below that 125 plus whatever parade homes are added on to that. And I included a chart, and we're, you know, we're in that 70 to 80 average over the last 10 years, so we've been substantially below that. And our current inventory right now for lots that are, that have been improved and are ready for sale and are ready to be built on is around 100 and, about 100 and, I think it's like 150, with another 38 of the Gander Development, the Westview Meadows Development to come on this summer that's under construction right now. So, we only have about, you know, in terms of this summer that are available, somewhere around 190 lots that are available. It's been our goal in the past and to have a five-year inventory of available lots, so there's, so that keeps the market at reasonable prices in terms of competition. And so, we're substantially below on what we've been carrying in terms of inventory. So, I think you could make an argument for increasing the amount of lots that would become available over the next couple of years. So, what Veridian's asked for is instead of the 30-year or 60 every two years, is to increase that to 45-year or 90 every two years. But in terms of fairness, I think if you offer it to Veridian, we'll have to offer the, go back retroactively and offer the same to the Tierneys for a couple of developments that have already been approved, which all seem reasonable, but that does boost our number above the 125. I think for 2020, that would boost us to 190, 170 for 2021, 163 for '22, 150, 138 and through. The point is, is that it would take, and it's going down, it would take us to do a rolling average to get down to that 125 in terms of approval. It'll take us to 2025 to get back to that number of having that type of inventory. So, that certainly will open up a number of lots in the community, substantially more than what we've had in the past. So, that's something I want you to keep in mind if we go forward of what they're asking for in terms of the additional lots in the phasing. So, I think it's really the two main issues that I think, Chris, you were interested in hearing from the public from, is the cost sharing. And certainly, it sounds like they were surprised in terms of what we were asking for, but we can always say we were surprised as well when we didn't, they didn't assume that they were going to have to pay for it, so. And we would expect, you know, when you go through these development process, this is when you, when these types of things get flushed out during annexations agreements. So, it's not a surprise that it took, you know, this long for it to get flushed out because this is where it comes down to in the agreement, who's paying for what. And so, now is at that time where, before you approve the development, let's make sure that everybody knows going forward who's cost sharing for what, for what off-site improvements.
Okay, thank you. Todd, do you have anything you want to share or anything? Okay. So, generally, we wouldn't have a public comment section during this, but I think that it's worth it, it's a large enough thing. So, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address us tonight on this topic of annexation? So, we have two? So, we're going to treat it the same way as our public comments, so it's one minute that you have, so just have one minute, so that's what we can do, okay?
Andy Maduski, 103 West Third Street. When you are looking at the future connection to Schumacher Park, I would really like to see a connection with where that parking is and a very safe pedestrian intersection. So, some RSGs, make sure that that's open, all that comes in, and that we just don't have any accidents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. Just a few items here, especially since this came up kind of unexpectedly. I will have to admit, I, having attended all the meetings, I've heard the 50-50 statement more than once on these roads. I don't know why this wasn't asked about at a board level in the past, so I kind of have some sympathy with the developer on that point. But I would also caution that we should be looking at historical payments, or I'm sorry, historical, how we have treated other developments when there have been off-site improvements involved, who had to pay in that, if there was any cost share from the village, to make sure if we're talking on the issue of fairness. Third item, it would be great for the public to hear if there's some sort of estimated cost for the improvements to Schumacher and the extension to Division Streets. I don't feel that that necessarily would rise to the level of a closed session. And finally, because this is new just now, even being through housing, I've never heard of this, the 30 units per development limitation, so it'd be great if we could hear and expound upon that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, three more hands up. No, no. Okay, so, how about I go left to right, just like reading, so?
Sunday Ashmore, 114 South Street. I missed the first part of this, although I read the packet. And my concern is really with the possibility of this going into a closed session, that it wasn't noticed, that the public would know that we're discussing, you know, the 50-50 story. So, hopefully, you'll stay in that discussion during that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street. I would just like to, in regards to the 30 units per development, that Veridian is proposing the obtainable, affordable housing developments that the village is badly in need of, so I would like to see them not be, not allowed to build and to be given the option to have that, the village is in need of it. And will, even if you add them, will those lots actually go faster than the more expensive ones? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Brannick, 6210 Schumacher Road. Previously, village officials have on multiple occasions approved developments that border my family's property without proper infrastructure: storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and streets. Now, it appears that the village is asking my family, Veridian Homes, and the young families who will be purchasing their homes in this neighborhood to pay for the village's actions. I feel this is wrong. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any comments, Brian, in regards to?
I have one comment, and then Brian can probably follow up on other ones. One is, what have we done with other developments? And I think that's a fair question, and I can tell you, there's an array of things that we've done with other developments. Back when the downturn in the economy in the early 2008 area, in order to kickstart the Kill Kenny or the, you know, the Ash, the area, the area that developed around Peaceful Valley Parkway, there was a negotiations in terms of the village participating in building the Parkway, and the village actually contributed a million dollars to build the Parkway through that, through that development. We've done other opposite, where we've required the developer to pay 100%, and we've done it with the property on Cop Road and Helenban Road, where we've required the developer to improve both sides of the road and all of the road, in bringing it up to an urban standard in terms of the Cop Road improvements. But then on Helenban Road, and not only, it's similar, I think it's similar to the Schumacher situation, where they're improving the development side to an urban improvement, but on the other side in the town, it's in the town of Springfield on that side, but bringing it up to a more, improving it, but not bring it up to more of a rural standard, but certainly making improvements, something similar to what we're requesting for on the Schumacher Road. In terms of costs, I don't, I don't think we have real good estimates yet. Some of you on the board may remember, we looked at this as a village project of extending Division Street, and I did go back and look at what our cost estimates were back in, back in that day, but that's, you know, that's pushing 15 years ago, and it was in the, you know, $200,000 range, and it'd be easy to double that, so. So, I mean, you're extending Division Street is going to take some time in terms of planning to make good decisions. It's going to involve probably the Parks Committee and the Public Works Committee, the developer, and maybe some neighboring property, and really, and then they've agreed to it, we're probably going to need some flexibility in terms of reconfiguring some of the back of the lot, the lots that back up to Division Street. So, that, that cost is a little bit unknown, but I think, you know, from, from just to keep as a back of an envelope type of thing, and it's about a half a million dollars for improvement, so we'd be, what they're proposing is we'd be responsible for about half of that. Granted, that's just a pretty broad estimate at that, at this point. Schumacher Road, and I haven't really put a lot of pencil and paper to it, but I think it's in that neighborhood of $150,000 in terms of improving the one side of the road, so our, our share would be. I think, I think I hit most of McPherson's comments. Brian?
Yeah, I think you hit most of the comments. I mean, certainly, the comments regarding making sure there's safe access for Schumacher Park, that's something I think the developer's already identified, is they have an interest in, as the village would. There's no question that if you choose to go to, you want to, you can go into closed session. This is why you have closed sessions, so that, quite frankly, I can talk to you, you know, and other staff members in an attorney privileged situation when we are discussing terms and conditions of an agreement, just like the developer has the ability to, you know, consult with its attorney in closed session. So, there's no question you can go in closed session tonight.
And add on to what Brian, in terms of the closed session, it's, the purpose is not to keep the public out of the discussion, the purpose is to keep the developer out of the discussion, because we want to have a conversation with our, or with our attorney. So, if it was just the public who was concerned about, that's, that's really not the issue. We don't want the opposing side to be part of our conversation.
So, you would probably be good, Chris, then, with us telling you what our bottom line is, as opposed to what we want to really get?
I want you to talk.
It was a joke.
In a fairness thing. I offered you that you could speak again after the public, so I'm throwing that back to you if you want to.
Yeah, no, again, yeah, we just, we just, we anticipated in all of our cost modeling that we would build half of these, both of them, and Kevin's right, Wannick's been all over the place with how they've done this before. Most effectively that I've found is when they did half and the developer did half, and sometimes when they did require the developer to do full, that they were direct marketing trails into the feeding roads into their development. And I recognize that off the highway there and Main Street, and that's why I committed to Kevin and said, well, you know, initially, we have to build this right turn lane right on Division Street, that's on us. We got to do, we have to do that because it gets people into our development, and so we'll take on that responsibility. But, you know, really, Schumacher and Division provide no benefit to our development, but we're willing to work with the village to cost effectively get these roads built together and benefit everyone, so.
Okay. So, at this point, from a discussion standpoint?
My recommendation is to go into closed session, and I think, I think we talked about it, I mean, we're, if you guys are willing, we're willing to go back into Todd's office so that everybody else can stay here. In other words, we can, we can move for the closed session as opposed to the audience, if you're open to that.
I can also tell the board, there's, you're not under any pressure to make a decision tonight. There is nothing that is prohibiting us from putting this off to a further meeting and us just getting further direction from you for, for some additional conversations.
Okay, so then, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Now, as when somebody to make that motion, we got to read the...
Before or after?
Before.
Okay.
Have we made a motion to go in closed session?
I have to read this first.
Oh, you have to read that first.
For purposes of discussion or action in an annexation agreement, the village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.851E for the purpose of conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session, discuss, and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
I make a motion to go in closed session?
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Aye, second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Roll call vote on this.
Trustee's deliver?
Yes.
Trustee Rungy?
Yes.
Trustee Rana?
Yes.
President Zellner?
Yes.
Trustee Wong?
Yes.
Trustee Moran?
Yes.
Okay, we will reconvene shortly. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We had a motion in closed session to go back into open session, made by Trustee Hertzberg, I believe, first, and Aaron was second, so, and it was unanimous. So, Brian, I'll defer right to you.
So, we had a discussion about the annexation agreement. We are going to be making a number of motions. I'm going to save the annexation agreement for last, because that's the one where, if you look at page 60, based on a closed session discussion, we're actually going to be adding to that motion. So, the first motion relates to the annexation ordinance. It is motion to approve the annexation ordinance conditioned upon execution of the annexation agreement and conditioned upon VH Heritage Hills LLC's acquisition of the land subject to the general development plan and preliminary plat.
Okay, do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second by Kristen Rungy, second by Phil Williams. Call the question. Any comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it.
Okay. Next motion relates to the general development plan. We already had a discussion in open session on that, and the developer provided some information and some updates. We're not changing that motion at all, so it is motion to approve the general development plan subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney and conditioned upon VH Heritage Hills LLC's acquisition of the land subject to the general development plan and preliminary plat.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Erin Moran?
No, second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, ayes have it.
Similar situation with the preliminary plat. Motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney and conditioned upon VH Heritage Hills LLC's acquisition of the land subject to the general development plan and preliminary plat.
Move to approve.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Ladies first, I guess, on that one, and second by Erin Moran. Call the question, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to note that while Division Street going through is currently on there, it's likely that that's going to have to change.
That's, that's fair, and I think that relates to, then, the discussion that we're going to have on the annexation.
I just want to make sure that the public is aware that that's, we're aware that that's a piece that needs to...
Okay, I think that's a good clarification, yep, or a good comment.
Okay, is that agreeable to our motion, that that's in there? Okay, great. All right, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it.
So, there's going to be, and I'm going to read the first part of the motion for the annexation agreement, but then I'm going to add certain terms and conditions as identified in the closed session, so this is going to be part of it. So, it's motion to approve the annexation agreement subject to final review and approval by the village administrator, village engineer, and village attorney, conditioned upon VH Heritage Hills LLC's acquisition of the land subject to the general development plan and preliminary plat, and the annexation agreement shall contain the following terms. One is consistent with the presentation that we had, the developer will be responsible for paying costs associated with the traffic impact analysis and the improvements on Main Street and the intersections with Division Street, Schumacher Road, and then the street that is going to be leading into the subdivision. We agree in the deed restriction that's going to apply to the multifamily lot that there can be a kind of a one-year deadline for, as identified by the developer. Improvements to Schumacher Road would be covered 100% by the developer. Schu- improvements to Schumacher Road would be covered one hundred percent by the developer. Improvements to Division Street, the cost would be split seventy-five by developer, twenty-five percent paid by the village. We agree that we would work in conjunction with the developer on, you know, based on the language that they've identified as to the location of Division Street and exactly how, you know, have as little impact on the sliding hill as possible and preferably keep it not impacted at all. On the phasing plan, we want to keep our existing language, which is thirty, thirty lots developed each year, sixty, uh, over a rolling two-year period, but essentially give the developer thirty free lots that they can develop at any point in time. And so that means during the first two years of development, if the developer wants to do forty-five and forty-five, or if they want to do thirty and forty and five and forty-five, they can do that. So, and the reason for that change for the public, and correct me if I'm wrong, is essentially we are lagging behind a little bit on our available lots right now. And so it does make sense to allow this developer and other developers to kind of jumpstart that. But we've also found that the phasing plan that we have had historically has worked very well for the village and in particular with how the village works with the school district to try to make sure that the school district does not get overwhelmed with development. Is that a fair statement?
Okay.
So those, and then there are some other terms and conditions that I would say we discussed in closed session and we will apply them at a staff level that don't, are a little bit not as significant as these, I would say, and don't hit the high points, but those were the high points. And so it related to the Main Street improvements in the intersections, the deed restriction on the multifamily lot, the Schumacher Road improvements, the Division Street road improvements, and the phasing plan including the thirty free lots.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg? Could have a second.
Yes, second, aye. Yeah.
You're seconding?
Yes, I am.
Okay, second by Phil Williams. Any other discussion right now? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. Okay. Next we have.
Yes.
On our agenda, discuss and take action on reuse of old library for village hall functions.
Renee's going to get the projector going for us again. So it's been a while since we've talked about this, uh, here, but that's because I've been busy doing what you've asked me to do. Um, I, I and my staff. And that's two things. One is to, uh, to conceptualize how we could potentially remodel the old library for village hall functions. What would a move, uh, look like and what, what would it potentially cost us? So I have, I have a, a strong estimate on that. That information is, you've already seen some of that info in your packet. Then I've also received proposals from consultants to assist us with a request for proposal process to consider reuse, um, or, uh, redevelopment of the village hall site. And you have three proposals in your packet for that as well. I didn't make a recommendation for you because I want to walk through, um, kind of some of the, the dollar implications and how they meld together with the outcome from our new library and the sale of this building and the things needed to, to maintain the village board's commitment with the new library project that you were only going to borrow up to twelve million. Because remember, the sale proceeds of whatever building we sell was a part of that pro forma to fill in the financial gap. And I have that information for you too. But to start out, I do want to point, uh, I do want to talk that I've mentioned I worked with a local company called Creative Business Interiors. And, uh, they worked with us to look at the current library, um, which looks like this. And if, if you recall, the library is twelve thousand square feet, split on two levels. What we were able to do with them was basically fit a majority of the operation of village hall on the main, the top floor of the library, the old library. I want to tell you why that was so important. As we tried to conceive the way in which our staff and our various departments here work together, the notion of sending a portion of our staff, one department of this function to the lower level while leaving the rest up above, um, had a number of complications that were concerning to, to me as the administrator and the way that we work together as a team. I think there's matter, reasonable matters of isolation that would have resulted with one person staged at a lower level versus the rest of the staff. And that, that functionality was something that concerned me. I would say that by leaving a majority of the lower level unimproved at this point, unless we find a different use for it, allows us as we grow, they'd be able to expand. And maybe there will be a more robust staffing need that will then make a lot of sense for the lower level. So that's why I, we really urged Creative Business Interiors to design a first-floor solution. So I really, I don't want to get into the, to the, you know, all the intimate details except to say that this, um, this solution today works for us. Um, here's the main door on the top level. Sorry, Joe, I'm getting you right in the dome there.
Watch out, the reflection might.
So we saw, we, we do solve a couple of issues. Our municipal court function is one that is, uh, highly sensitive, requires a lot of, um, documentation control. And desirably, uh, they, they would really desire their own lockable closed space. And we actually create that right here in the main door. This is, um, basically the municipal court office. They would have a window for service and then storage for all the records. So it, but it's self-included, it's got, uh, uh, full glass on the front, so it can't be accessed at other times of the day either. Then the engineering and planning office jumps off to the right where, so its function is all centered right here. Uh, building inspection, the engineering offices, Tracy's desk, serving building inspection, planning and engineering functions there. I will say that there's room, there's room for modification. We are, we, we, we can get to the finer, finer points of modification still. Um, but this is the good general concept for us. Public receiving comes straight ahead from the front door, um, with a reception area here. The deputy clerk, um, who oversees that function is situated in the office that is currently where Eric is at. Um, and that has, uh, clear access over a half wall to the front door. So this department overseeing the reception then can, can, uh, supply backup to that function. All the other offices with administration and finance along with the conference room or where the board would go for closed session are all situated here with a spare office that could be used for expansion. If, if a board member or the village president wants to meet with a constituent, there's a space for that. Or perhaps we have a part-time intern, um, we're situated that way. With then, um, uh, other three staff people, two finance and Kylie serving the administration clerk department situated in a cubicle scenario there in the middle of that space. The, uh, what we don't achieve in this building, and I don't, really don't, we don't think it's feasible, is to come up with a space for this function much better than we have now. It's a complicated building with its, its roofs and its peaks. As much as we could utilize the lower level, I'll be honest, it, it's just a dungeon down there. Do you want that to be the place of your municipal business? So we have a room that accommodates a similar number of staff and it's arranged right here. Certainly that, you know, we have to come up with final arrangements where the staff sit and the village board and, and the public. But, uh, and intermixed in all this is a bunch of technological improvements. There's no drop, dropdown screen. There'll be large monitors on the wall. There'll be a monitor facing the village board. So as you're looking at a presentation, you're actually looking out at the audience at a monitor that'll be above you. And then we have telescoping doors here, glass, essentially a glass wall that can be folded in to accommodate expansion if for some reason we have a, 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 a crowd that it goes beyond our capacity on a particular night. You can slide these through a channel, these walls through a channel that then opens up the, the lobby, the open lobby space to accommodate a larger meeting. So that, that's a possibility. What we do have to be really willing to do is as, if we predict a large meeting, and as we've done before, we should plan that the library or the village center will be a place for us to go and, and really not be afraid of doing that, um, without, without worry, I guess, is what I'm saying. So that is, uh, the main level. And then the, um, the lower level, as I said, is largely untouched except for, I would just call this a, um, a hodgepodge space for either additional meeting. I would just see this as maybe four different tables in there that are movable, like the new ones in the library conference center. They can maybe be pushed out to the side when we have summer interns. Or they can be gathered together for, uh, an additional large conference or spread all around for a, a creative work group, who knows? But that along with this huge storage corridor, um, will be the space that we make use of for village functions. And the, the break room is over here. So we, at this point, we would plan to make, reuse the break room as it was used by the library for staff. And that, that's the, that's the scope. I really don't think we need to jump into design smithing this tonight except to say that according to Creative Business Interiors, that this, this will work for us today. So with that, I want to, uh, I believe I included in your packet, did I include this sheet?
Yes.
So, uh, their proposal suggests that, um, at a base level, we can, we can see through this project for five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And at a high-level budget, six hundred and fifty thousand. What you saw there, that design that I just laid out, that's the high-level budget. Things we might have to do differently to, to cut, cut corners is that telescoping wall that pockets into itself in the boardroom, that, that's a big piece of infrastructure because it's both got upper and lower channels.
Can I interject? This is on page two oh seven of your packet.
No.
Thank you. Yep. Sorry. So they, they demonstrated a room for us to, to make those tweaks if we felt necessary. But I want to hand out a sheet that tells the bigger picture of can we even, can we even bite off any of this? Um, you can hand those, there are a couple for down here. Can we bite off any of this project? And, um, and I've got a spreadsheet that I can bring up for the public to see as well. I'm sorry, guys, you won't be able to see it real well. Well, let me, let me scroll in this way. So here, here's the scenario that I, I want to lay out for you. A, achieve our borrowing or stick within our borrowing limit for the new library. I would assume that's a, that's like a no-brainer. And then move village hall to the old library. So what are our funding needs in that scenario? We need three hundred thousand dollars from a sale of whatever property to place us at the, right at the twelve million dollar public borrowing mark for the library. If we are at the, 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 um, the full scope of the improvement, we're talking six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Together, we need nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and change to, to, to solve this, to solve this situation, this scenario. So what are our potential sources? Village Hall in twenty sixteen appraised at a, at a fair market, uh, commercial building rate of a million dollars. I personally think it's fair to assume that we're going to see a number like that in the least for this property, but I can't tell you for certain. So that number has a question mark on it. But I did use the twenty sixteen appraisal. We also have, um, just over sixty-two thousand dollars left, and Renee confirmed this for me, of expected campaign contributions that are yet to come in. So those two things combined, uh, tell us that we have one point six million dollars in potential sources. Now remember the asterisks on both of those because they, you know, in both cases, it's a pending piece of information. But I feel relatively secure in telling you that we can accomplish this scenario with a cushion of a hundred thousand dollars. Now what would you, do you do with that? We would simply borrow less. That would, that would reduce then our borrowing for the new library. And that's the budget story. So, um, let me take a break because there are scenarios you asked us to review and consider, which I did and you saw in the packet. Um, but questions at first about this scenario, um, the notion of moving to the old library. I included in your packet that memo that described the rationale as to why we, we all felt like that was a, it's a reasonable idea to consider that move. So questions thus far?
What members, questions?
Does the estimate include new furniture?
It does.
Excellent, good.
There's, besides maybe decent office chairs, um, there's very, very little that would. The, the, in fact, our cubicle stuff, uh, that was donated, who, where did we get that from? That was donated from a business that, Kevin, you're.
I don't remember.
You would know this. Where did we get all that cubicle stuff from?
I don't remember.
Great.
You need some new stuff.
Yeah. I mean, you lean on the edge, you lean on the edge of one of the edges and the pieces fall off.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, so yes, it does include furniture.
Good.
Um, it includes technology advancements, phones. The, what you saw in one page is a, a, a book, an evaluated book on the, on, on that estimate.
Why do we have no numbers for a move?
They, they didn't include move numbers because we, they thought that there may be some pieces of the proposal that will move or shift that might see us sort of absorb it. But largely they thought that, um, because we're likely doing all-new furnishings, that there wouldn't be a wild moving process. I mean, there'll be stuff to do, there'll be files and papers and things like that. But, um, they, they didn't, they didn't see it as something that was going to jump off the page as a marked serious investment for us.
Well, I see, uh, zero chance of selling the library and getting it onto tax rolls. I see a hundred percent chance of selling this and getting this on the tax rolls. So I think that, uh, long story short, we have the potential of putting a million-dollar office building on the market in Wannakee and collecting taxes on it.
Right.
As it stands right now, we've got two buildings that we're not getting taxes on.
That's some of the key stuff we talked about as far as the rationale goes. That, that hasn't changed, so you're, you're right, Phil.
I think that was a big drive of this and we've been talking about this for a while, so it's cool to see the numbers and.
I had, I had a resident who heard about this, and this is maybe a month and a half ago. Who just got all wound up and said, are you guys crazy? You can't have village hall move from downtown? And I don't know if it's just the presence of a village hall that people can see and is visible. I think that was his concern versus, you know, who's going to know where the library is? Well, it's right next to the high school. So I would think it's fairly reasonable. And people that come here, well, they come here to pay their taxes and they, um, come to meetings. So it, it wasn't a, I mean, to me, it's not a deal breaker, but I was just going to share one resident who thought it was just a crazy idea.
I've had people that don't even know that this is the village hall, so.
Most people, I'd say the majority don't know this is the village hall.
Yeah. I mean, I've had at least one person say I had crazy ideas too, so to say that's really, really accurate.
Wow. I. You know what I would say, Gary? That, that memo, um, behind the, the cover memo here, the one we had from August.
Yes.
Um, share that with the individual because there, there's aspects to what, what we can and can't do at the library now that are real driving factors for us. Um, Bill, specifically, when we talked in August, you asked about, um, what are other options? What, what are, what else could we do? And I do have information on that. Status quo is always an option. In that scenario, we have a holding cost. Uh, we did estimate. is always an option. In that scenario, we have a holding cost. We did estimate about $20,000, $22,000 a year for a library building sitting empty, for the things that we have to do to maintain the building and the property. So that's, that's going to be sunk, that's, that's sunk no matter what, if we do nothing. I identified what that is, and I think that the status quo basically leaves the old library solution unanswered. I mean, we can't stop there. We still have to figure out what we're going to do. Option two, sell both these facilities and consider the alternative of adding on to the west end of the new library. And we designed the site to accommodate about a 7,000 square foot addition. OPN did do rough design for that. We know the site can accommodate that space. You're talking 2.3 to $3 million for a project. I definitely don't see us getting that revenue out of the sale of these two properties. And I, to be clear, a municipal building, unlike other municipal facilities, is a project, if we were to borrow, would require a mandated and binding referendum. So that would have to be a question. So it makes that complicated, but not impossible. I mean, can we take, can we sit tight and take time and maybe put away money over time and then find a day to coordinate a sale and move, or even hold a referendum to solve that riddle? We can do that. So, because we're sitting here and we're, I mean, we're surviving. The other option is to maybe not jump at, starting the remodel now and instead just run the RFP on this building. What we do know is that's about a two to three month, a three-month process from Baker Tilly, who I asked today, well, how long it would take? It's about three months. Timing-wise for the remodel, CBI suggests that it would take, if we were to start in a couple of weeks, it would take to us to the end of June. We could be in by end of June. Now, there's a timing issue there, because we, moving amidst the presidential election would be really super crazy.
And...
And all the prep and the, all the, all the stuff that leads up to that.
That would be hard.
Yeah. So, so the timing, if we were to kick it off and say, "Do it right now, no matter what price this comes in at," that, we would get in in June. But if we wanted to hold tight and see what the market does with this property, we could do the RFP. We could even perhaps proceed with architectural and design that would get us to the stamp plans. We could proceed with that, with these guys now, but that would delay us a couple of months, and I don't know what the, that would be concerning to the, certainly to the clerks department. But that's definitely an option, because then our eyes are wide open on, on an offer, some sort of solid, sound offer. Although I, boy, based on what I know, I feel pretty confident at the million mark from 2016. But we haven't gone to market. So that is the, that's the, that's the full deal, as far as looking at what our alternatives are.
Okay. For members, any question, other questions for Todd or comments?
Yeah, on page, what is it, 207 or page 31, the one with the green bars and whatever on it. There's a whole lot of items...
Or the price.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
There's a whole lot of items on there that are listed as not in contract. And there's a handful that I'm not at all concerned with, but I see server, phones, security, some of those sorts of things are not listed here. And I think it would be good to have some numbers for some of those items, because those can add up fairly quickly.
Yeah, well, well, as far as, to the extent that, I mean, I don't know if we need new servers, but, I mean, there, we have that planned and budgeted otherwise.
I think there's one in the budget for 2020. I mean, they're, they're phased. We just got a couple new ones recently.
You plan on moving the technology.
Okay.
I don't think that necessarily means you're playing, like, putting in a whole new, and I don't know if we can move our rack or anything like that, but that, we'd have to evaluate that.
Sure.
They, they did indicate that they did not speak with our tech to get down into the nitty-gritty of some of those tech pieces, except to say that they thought we would likely reuse a lot of our IT equipment.
Sure. And that's kind of where I get into the concern, because, I mean, when we had our house and just put a security system into that 15 years ago, that was multiple thousands of dollars. So you start talking about, you know, a village building that's considerably larger, more entrances, different stuff. That can definitely...
Okay. The, Caitlin reminded me that the security system, they, what it's actually included, we had a bid from, we had a proposal from a company here in Wanaquie.
Best Defense?
That, no.
Oh, that's who we have now.
Yeah, like, Sound Advice, gave us a proposal to do updates to this building, new monitors, security equipment throughout, and that proposal is his high-budget level.
Under the...
So the $20,000 under high budget, that includes security improvements.
Okay.
That's why they didn't include it there, because they took and rolled in that Best Defense estimate.
And then the only other item on there...
Sound, Sound Advice.
Fitness equipment? Or is that just something that's left over from...
We don't have a fitness center currently.
And I didn't see anything on any of the drawings.
Where is it?
Down here.
Second fitness.
Oh, look at that.
That must just be a line in there.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Is it called the stairs?
No, we have...
Yeah, the stairs.
Yes.
Kevin, Kevin wants one of those treadmill desks.
Scott has access to those in her house.
Picking forth to the break.
Yeah, picking for the break.
Fitness, I don't know, it's like, we don't have a lease.
Yeah, I would say that they proposed signage, it's like a, so there's going to be some move, move back and forth. There's like a 10, what was the sign? $10,000 maybe for a brand-new monument sign. But we still have out there the, the footings and the, the posts where we had the library sign attached, and we would follow our similar signing process and just, you know, stick that on that post. So, you know, there, there's room for things to move up and down, and CBI felt confident that what they showed in a high-budget level gave us room to do that, along with, they had a 5% contingency, not a huge contingency number, actually. Does that worry you? If you were building a road, that would worry you?
I, in my contract, I only guaranteed to landscape one Village Hall property. This one was it.
The other one's too big.
Actually, fortunately, the, the library, just a couple of years ago, they tore out all the junk that was over there. They did some, made some improvements. So we would, process-wise, and Kevin knows this better than I do, a CBI-type company, who I personally think would be great to work with, we would have obligation to bid this work. I would see us bidding a project that would be a, a design-build approach. And CBI would be the type of company that, that would look to bid on being that firm. We can, and we probably should though, to be at a point where we can do bidding, to engage CBI in this first architectural and design service would seem to be a meaningful step.
Yeah.
Right? And you felt that that $20,000...
It's good value.
Good value to, to get that step handled, taken care of.
From a parking standpoint, do we ever have times here where parking gets to be, I know, we just have this overflow out in the big parking lot, it's never an issue, but from the schools, you know, they're using up every stall they got. Are we ever going to have a need for more parking that the library would allow us to have?
You know, I think, my opinion is that with facilities, we've constructed in the library and the Village Center, we've found our spaces that will, that will demand that sort of use. The main one would be, I mean, we rarely have a meeting during the day that has more than 20 participants. Your election training would have how many? But you could do that at the...
Yeah. I mean, there's...
20 people, maybe?
30.
30?
Yeah. But again, like, we would probably move those with the advances of Badger Book into polling places at the Village Center, so they can...
Yeah, Village Center, I think.
So the current library has 40 total spaces. Doesn't look like it, but it does on the top and bottom level. If, what if...
Renee, any issues with our budget for taking care of that cost as Todd recommended with Architectural Services and Design? It's $20,000.
Well, we didn't talk about that. I mean, I, I would say we probably would take that from fund balance.
And then it would be, it would be recouped by the final...
But we could recoup, but yeah, so you can, you can, if you, we have a policy where we can sort of pre-spend borrowed money. We have a, I just have to make a declaration that we're going to reimburse ourselves once we do the borrowing. So I guess if it got to a point where we didn't, well, in this case, because, well, we would be getting, the, the revenue sources aren't borrowed money to, to do this. We would upfront the costs and then be reimbursed once this building was sold and that the remaining pledges came in. So we would kind of just act as our own banker. I think. I mean, I haven't thought that all the way through, but...
So I, I mean, I, I like how the numbers look. I would be willing to bet you, you can I say it, or I can, I can say it, you were right in public, but I think your $111,000 number, it'll probably give you half of that when it's all done. I think we'll have spent that, half of that amount. It'll really be a true savings of about 55, I think, in my opinion.
So we get a building on tax rolls, which is...
Things always cost a little more.
And the movement of things costs more.
I think there's still going to be cost for moving, but, just my opinion. What are we looking for tonight for you, for us, for guidance for you?
Well, again, I, I laid out those options. If, if in looking at all this, you feel confident, certain, that the Village Hall should move to the library based on what we know now, then I would recommend approval of using Baker Tilly for RFP consulting services to market this property. And I would recommend engaging Creative Business Interiors, the Architectural and Design Services phase of, of the old library remodel in preparation for a design-build bidding process.
Okay. So Phil said it very eloquently before, but I'll say that I agree that this is a very good, sound strategy for us, and that it would be very difficult for us to sell the library. I think the probably only other option would be for us to deed it over to the school district at that point, which would bring us no revenue. So if we were going down that road of moving on to the library, I just don't think that's a sound decision. And the school district has shown really no interest in the building. So with that, I'm going to make the motion that, should I make a motion or should I just state? I'm going to make a motion that we move Village Hall from its current location to the new library and engage...
The old library.
The old library.
The old library.
Okay.
The old library, thank you. And engage Baker Tilly.
For RFP services and CBI for Architectural and Design Services.
Architectural Services, Architectural Design Services. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second by Phil. Any other comments?
Is there a way for us to, and we have the, we have the assessment, is there any, is there any cheap way for us to confirm that assessment without, I mean, I'd hate, I mean, my only thing would be like, hey, all of a sudden, it's only worth $500,000. I'm, I'm not guessing that's true.
The appraisal.
This property, I mean. Is there any way to...
I, I mean, market activity has only shown upward trend since 16. I don't think it would make much, personally, I don't think it would make much sense to spend $5,000 on another appraisal when we're gonna, we're gonna be on the edge of having the market tell us what it is by virtue of the proposals that we receive.
But we're sort of, I mean, we're sort of trapping ourselves, aren't we? I mean, I'm not...
We're not trapping, because if the RFPs come back and we aren't getting the revenues we would get...
Other we can get out.
Yeah, the only area you're investing right now is 25.
I'm good with that then. I apologize. It's okay. Why, I understand.
Right, for this to work, we kind of have to stick pretty close to these numbers.
Yep.
So if they don't come in, then...
Yeah, the $5,000's a pretty reasonable number to get that answer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So, okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host?
Oh, was there a vote? Yep.
There was a motion second.
Motion second?
Motion by first.
Did we miss something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have, discuss and take action on next steps for Village Board Strategic Planning, Village Mission and Value Statement, and Propose Citizen Survey Process. Todd?
Okay, well, I did include in your packet a little bit of a summary or recap of what we did that Saturday back a few, a few months ago. Again, I complimented the Village Board, Board on working as well as we did together. That included, out of that came, came two draft, two draft mission statements. We, you guys separated them to, into groups and this is, this is not...
It is.
No.
I didn't know you were going to use my packet.
Anyway, I'm, I'm not proposing, I'm not necessarily suggesting that tonight we've got to wordsmith that and make it perfect, although I'm open to, open to having more discussion if you care to. What I kind of jumped to, actually, was the discussion that we had about data that we need, that you need to make really good decisions. And the notion of citizen survey or engaging the public in the process is, is something that you were, you were curious about, and I've done some work to find out, in my opinion, the best potential approach to getting that and making citizen surveying a part of our routine, essentially. Included in your packet was some information from the National Community Survey. It's from the National Research Center out of Denver. Actually, Kate and I both, both have experience working with them. I used the NCS, then they called it National Citizen Survey, back in Milton when I was there, 18 years ago. And you in River Falls had experienced...
Yep, seven years ago.
Seven years ago. So both of us had, had good experience. It, it is, it's really a design product that can establish an opportunity for cities, communities across the country to place themselves ne- next to one another in understanding citizen satisfaction for municipal service delivery. There are communities in Wisconsin that participate, and then as, as you saw, communities across the country. They, because they've honed in their craft on doing citizen surveys, they can really be competitive with the pricing while guaranteeing a really solid scientific sample. That gives you really great confidence in the results. So you saw in the packet a sample of their survey instrument. It's not, I mean, it's not a lot of magic to it, but it hits the basics. It gives you some room for some custom questions, and I think it will deliver us the answers to citizen satisfaction over the span of our municipal services. We, I emailed you today a updated proposal that represents 2020 costs, and in that proposal, the staffer there indicated that their recommend, recommendation to their clients isn't to do just a web-based survey, which we did price out. I think that came out to somewhere like between $10,000 and $12,000 for, for one survey effort. And that process was, is where they would send out postcards to tell people that this is the address to where they can go and complete the survey online. That is, that process is available to us still, but they're urging us in doing a survey to consider their basic service, which includes the postcards reminding people about the survey, the option of doing it online, but then also sending the printed copy. That's a 1,700-piece random sample. They've indicated that's the most common used and the, brings in the highest level of confidence and result. So what I'd like to suggest, what I am suggesting and recommending, is that we use balance from our credit card rebate. And I pick that source because all departments across our organization, by virtue of using their credit cards, contribute to generating the rebate. And the results of the survey, I see being of benefit to all departments, certainly relating, at least relating to all departments. So I like to suggest... So, I like to suggest that we initiate, without delay, a national, national community survey, begin the process, and, and I think it, what is it, a oh, March to July, March, a four-month process. Have those then results in front of us, that we can use with our continued strategic planning.
So, I would, I would, I think it's exactly what you're gonna say or kind of inferring there. Within the survey of market, you've done a lot of that, Kristin?
Yeah, I think they're.
Maybe you can share your wealth of knowledge with us right now in regards to that?
Oh, excellent, if I.
And, you know, this, this company, but also what's been most effective? 'Cause I know our housing study, what did we get total residents back? Do we remember?
Off the top of my head, it was a lot, a lot more than I expected, honestly. I want to say it was over six hundred at the end, which was really good. We were within plus minus four point five percent of, of the population. And it was, it was relat, more women than men, which we almost always see. But it was relatively representative of, of the, the community. This cost, I was really surprised at the price they came in. It's a very good value for the money. The UW River Falls Survey Center, UGov and GFK, which is, UGov and GFK are international, one international and one national polling organizations. The UW River Falls Survey Center and the UW River Survey Centers would each be over twenty thousand dollars, probably closer to thirty for something of, of this sort. And we probably aren't gonna get the numbers that, that these folks are, are saying that. GFK and UGov would be significantly, significantly higher than that. So, I felt it was a good value for the money. When I looked at the questions, I sat down with Todd and we looked at them. They're well-constructed, they are the types of questions that I think we're gonna find really useful. And we're, we are allowed to customize. That was a real bonus to it, so I'm very pleased with it. I'd like to keep the data. I'll talk to the survey vendor for that, once we get closer to a contract. I don't know that they have had a request for that in the past, but if we can keep and house the data to so much, and I can't imagine they'd object to that. So much the better, so, rather than they do the analysis and just give us the results. So, I will be the only one that ever looks at it, I'm sure. No one else is gonna wanna sit down and geek out. You, all right, we'll geek out together someday over it. It'll be great. Yeah, so, I'm pleased with it.
Okay, do we have other comments in reference to it? Anybody have any concerns, or did you wanna make a motion, Kristin?
I move that we, and I don't have the wording that I probably need, I move that we move forward, thank you. I move to approve utilizing the National Community Survey and authorize the village administrator to execute the necessary agreements and fund the project using the 2019 credit card rebates. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Kristin Rungy, second by Erin Moran. Any other comments?
Just that I'll, the, Kristin, I'll talk to you a bit, and you too, Chris, about how we assemble our question, our, the questions we can make ourselves. And we'll, I want the board to see the survey instrument before we give it a stamp of approval.
Perfect. Okay, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Next item, discuss and take action on appointments to the Create Wanakee Committee.
Well, Chris, you and I had great return on interested, from interested citizens, fifteen applicants. Most interesting was the, the length of dialogue within their, within their applications. People were really excited about this, so we're excited to get it started. The recommendation's in front of you for a nine-member committee. And Chris is suggesting trustee Moran as the trustee rep and chair on the committee, so that motion is prepared in your memo.
We had outstanding applicants, and it was amazing, the quality of people that we have in our community, interested in the arts, and they really stepped up. And I'm, I'm happy to say that. It was a difficult choice to narrow it to nine. We sat and we kept.
You asked if we can make the committee bigger.
Yeah, I just, I did ask if we can make it, and Todd said, well, so.
I did promise we'd get them involved whether they're on the committee or not.
Yes, so that's, that's a good thing, so.
Move approval.
Motion by Bill Ranon.
Second?
Second by Kristin Rungy. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
I'll move we adjourn.
Oh.
Second.
Second by Kristin Rungy.
Wow.
All in favor, say aye.
Oh, aye.
We're in bachelor season now.